Thank you everyone and welcome to Bexhill-on-Sea Town Council Full Council Meeting tonight, Wednesday 21st of May. Can I remind everybody as usual to turn your phones either off or on to airplane mode? Just give a couple of seconds to enable that to happen because it affects the recordings. So without further ado, I will move on to the first agenda item, which is to elect a Chair of Bexhill Town Council for the year 2025/26. So the first thing I will do is to ask, are there any nominations for Chair, which is also Mayor, of Bexhill Town Council for the year 25/26? If so, please raise your hand. councillor Blagrove?
I'd like to elect councillor Connor Winter.
At the moment, I'm asking if there's anyone who wishes to stand.
Fine.
So if you show both your hands if you wish to stand, I'll start the roll-in. councillor Winter. councillor Plim.
councillor Wilson.
Thank you, I'm there. Anyone else? We have three names. councillor Drayson. In the order I've written down, which is myself, do I have a seconder for that position? Please. Thank you councillor Peters. councillor Winter, do you have a seconder? councillor Blagrove. councillor Plim, do you have a seconder? councillor L. councillor Drayson, do you have a seconder? councillor Blagrove.
I have a second too.
Do you have an alternative seconder?
councillor Hunt.
Thank you. It's just safer, we're unsure whether you're allowed a second too or not, so it's better if there's another seconder. So at this point, I would like to read, just to ensure clarity, if I can find it, the standing order that was agreed at the last full council meeting, which I did have here. So this was an addition, which was on Appendix F of the last full council, I just want to make this very clear. The initial vote, all nominated candidates are put to a vote, if one candidate receives an absolute majority, that's more than half of the votes cast by our electorate. And in this instance, that number is nine, which is an absolute majority of the number here tonight of seventeen. Second bit, if no majority is achieved, no candidate achieves an absolute majority, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated from the contest.
Sixteen.
Yes, so the majority is nine. Three, subsequent rounds, the remaining candidates are subject to another round of voting. This elimination process continues, removing the candidate with the least votes each time, until a candidate obtains an absolute majority. Four, resolving a tie, in the event of a tie between the final two candidates, the Chair of the meeting has the authority to cast the deciding vote, and that has been confirmed as if it is a tie at any round, then that the Chair of the meeting will have the deciding vote. In each round, each council is entitled to vote for one candidate only. The vote is by show of hands. If no candidate gets an absolute majority, the one with the fewest votes is eliminated and new vote is held. But again, only one vote per councillor per round. For clarity, I will be making a note of who's voting for who, as will the two officers here tonight, and we will compare for accuracy at the end of each vote. councillor Crotty.
Thank you Chair, can it be a recorded vote please?
It would be a recorded vote over here, yes. It has to be, to ensure that every councillor only votes once.
It'll obviously be recorded, yeah.
And it is being recorded, so we will be able to see that. Any other questions? Otherwise, I will progress this.
Are you allowed to vote for yourself?
You are allowed to vote for yourself, yes. So there's no particular order in which this can be done, so I would suggest unless anyone objects, do it in alphabetical order. Is that reasonable? Or I can do it in the order I've written it down. So I propose alphabetical order. So could you please show your hands, those who are voting, remember you have one vote only in this round of four. Who's voting for councillor Drayson, please? That is a total of one.
Yes, not surprising.
The next in alphabetical order is councillor Plim, because you will please show of hands those voting for councillor Plim. Thank you. The next vote is, I'm doing my alphabet very quickly.
It's you.
It's me. So all those in favour of me, please show your hands. Please leave them standing, raising so I can write them down for... And finally, all those in favour of voting for councillor Winter, please show your hands. Thank you. I'll compare accuracy by passing my sheet over. So the result of that election is in the same order as it was done, councillor Drayson has one, councillor Plim has three, councillor Winter has three, and I have nine, which means I have an absolute majority, so there is no need for a strike-out vote, and it is a wish of this council that I be elected for a second year as Chair of this town council.
Thank you, and I would just like to give you this. It is a past mayor, but also still...
Thank you very much indeed. To explain, every year, a past mayor and it has the year on it, so I still get presented with this because it has the year on it. It would be of no use to anyone else because they won't have been mayor for the year that I've been mayor. So thank you councillor Sain. Thank you. And thank you everyone, it's been a pleasure. I now have to sign a declaration of acceptance. So at that point, I will move on to item two, which is to elect a Vice Chair and Deputy Mayor. I should follow the same process, but without reading the new standing orders that was incorporated because I've done that once, and I think we all understand that perfectly. So do I have any nominations for Vice Chair and Deputy Mayor of Bexhill Town Council? councillor Drayson? Any others? councillor Sain? Any others? councillor Drayson, do you have a seconder for that? councillor Blagrove? And I would be more than happy to second councillor Sain because he has tremendous support this year. So again, I'll do the same order, in alphabetical order. Please, could you show by hands, all those in favour of councillor Drayson being Vice Chair and Deputy Mayor, please show. Thank you. Okay. So the conferred answer is that councillor Drayson has received four votes and councillor Sain has received twelve votes. So that confirms it's a wish of this town council that councillor Sain is re-elected as Deputy Chair, Vice Chair and Deputy Mayor of Bexhill-on-Sea Town Council. So item three of the agenda, apologies for absence, do we have any apologies?
councillor Gosse is on holiday.
Thank you. Item four is to receive declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest, do we have any of those? councillor Winter?
Member of the district council.
Thank you. councillor Timpey?
Member of the district council.
Thank you.
Member of the district council.
Member of the district council.
Thank you. Item five, chairs announcements, I don't have any. So moving on to item six, is the minutes of the meeting held on the 30th of April, looking for a proposer and a seconder for those minutes to be approved. Proposing by councillor Sain, seconded by councillor Drayson. All those in favour of accepting those? All those against? Abstentions? Thank you. So item seven is to note the minutes of the amenities committee on the 7th of May, Appendix B, and the minutes of the 14th of May, which is the Finance and Audit Committee, Appendix C. They are purely for notation, but distributed with ease. For us, there are no recommendations from those committees, which is item eight. Moving on to item nine, is to review the delegation arrangements and terms of reference for those committees, which is shown in Appendix D, that is as we have now. I'm sure everyone has reviewed it and it's worked for the last year, so it's the time of year at the annual meeting for us to review all of our policies and documents, so... So need a proposer and a seconder to accept that? Reposing? Seconded by councillor Sain, all those in favour of accepting the scheme of delegation, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Moving on to... Sorry councillor L.
Thank you Chair. During the coming year, we're obviously going to have a new town clerk, and I think it will be a good idea, at some point during the coming year, to establish a working party to look at the delegation arrangements, in fact, to look at our standing orders. These are things that are going to take a while, and I'd like to think that the new town clerk, whoever, could be, could in fact be part of that negotiation, and that we may well have...
Could we talk about it at the end of the meeting, if that's okay?
Indeed, absolutely, absolutely, but I just didn't want the public to think that we went the same old, same old route. I think they need looking at it.
To be fair, we have done some of the policies, there was three councillors last March that reviewed some of them, and I think there is some work, it's always worth reviewing it, but to review all of these in a full council meeting is probably excessive, so we'll talk about it afterwards, about how we can make that happen.
Fine, thank you Chair.
So the next item is item ten, which is to approve appointment of members to existing committees.
Chair, I know you've just been updating with my related application, actually, I withdraw the application of interest in the Finance Committee, and would actually like to be considered for the Engagement as well as the Amenities Committees.
So just for clarity, on the documents that have been sent out, it's as is, but we need to add in councillor Drayson into the Amenities Committee and into Engagement and Communications Committee. Okay? So if we take the minute order in the document...
I think you can add that because it's in the space.
So the other thing is, there are councillors that didn't reply, expressing their preference. Now is the time to say if you have any preferences, or if you're happy with the names, with the addition of councillor Drayson in Amenities and Engagement. So if there's anybody that wishes to go on the committees, it is our choice as to how many members there are in each committee, we can flex that if we wish, but that's there for guidance, as to how many we had last year. councillor Timpey?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, unfortunately, I was away and didn't have access to any computers, so I would like to continue on Finance and Audit, please.
Okay.
And also Engagement, or is that now Amenities?
No, it's still Engagement and Communication.
Yeah. Please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others wish to go on any other committees? Any other hands being shown? councillor Thomas? councillor Byrne? You are on, that's what we're...
I'm already on.
You're on the list.
The...
He really is.
I have my minutes up on the screen, looking up.
I should be more specific.
Just making sure.
Anyone else who's not on the list? Any other hands showing, otherwise I'll... councillor Crossy?
Yeah, thanks Chair, I'd like to go on the Engagement one, please.
Okay. Any other... Otherwise, I'll move on and we'll sort out who's going where. Okay, right. So is it the wish of this town council to have seven members of the amenities? That's how many we had last year, so if we want to change that, we'd have to have a proposer and a seconder to change the number, otherwise we'll do a strike-out vote to decide which one is less wished to go on there. councillor Crossy?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to myself off to the Admiralty one, please.
In which case, there are seven people wishing to go on to the amenities, and that's with seven members. So in which case, we can do that on block, and propose and second all seven, because there are seven people who wish to do, and I've gone around the table and no other people want to join that committee. So if anyone has anything else to say, councillor Plim?
Yeah, could you just remind us who's on the committee, because I make it six.
It's councillor Byrne, councillor L, councillor Gosse, councillor Plim, councillor Ruston, myself and councillor Drayson. I accept it's a little bit complicated with names coming in and out, so they are the seven. So I need a proposer and a seconder. councillor Plim, proposing?
No, I'm just making a point now, we've broken our procedures for having forty percent of our DC councils on that committee, if that's the case, because we should only have two on a committee of seven, and we have three on our DC councils.
We've only got one on this one.
Two, you've got two. Two, sorry, you're correct, yeah, sorry, I stand corrected.
Sorry, it's two out of seven, which is less than forty percent.
Yeah, that's right, I stand corrected.
Any other comments? Otherwise, a proposer? Are you proposing?
Yeah.
councillor Drayson?
And it's three.
Seconder councillor Crotty, all those in favour?
So there are three rubber councillors on amenities.
Where? councillor Byrne, councillor Drayson, councillor Wilson.
councillor Wilson?
I'm not.
councillor Wilson?
It's Wilson.
councillor Wilson?
I know, you're thinking of Winter.
Sorry.
Congratulations on your election.
Yeah, you can sit next to me now.
I've been elected everywhere too long. There are two out of seven, so we are within the forty percent range of...
We've only voted for Chair, not for rubber.
So we've got a proposer, I need a seconder for this councillor Crotty, all those in favour of that committee structure. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Engagement and Communications last year had six, and this year, we have eight people wishing to stand on that committee. Yeah, I can take two of those. So why know that until it's forty percent of eight, it would be appropriately forty percent of six. So if we take it down to six, it's great. So assume councillor Timpey?
So I'll just withdraw from the agreement.
Okay. That makes seven, so we have the option of increasing the number from six to seven, or having a strike-out vote to reduce it to six. councillor Crossy?
Chair, can we have a names of who's on you?
Yes, of course. councillor Blagrove, councillor Sain, councillor Plim, councillor Winter, councillor Drayson, councillor Thomas and councillor Crotty. That equals seven. councillor Jack?
I propose we increase it to seven.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? We have a seconder to increase it, councillor Peters. All those in favour of increasing the committee to seven? Okay, we've increased that to seven. I now need a proposer and a seconder to accept those seven on to the committee. councillor Drayson, councillor Sain, seconding it. All those in favour of accepting those seven, and it is within the forty percent, please show. That's carried unanimously. Move on to Finance and Audit, which last year had eight members, and we currently have nine wishing to be on Finance and Audit, which is councillor Blagrove, councillor Crotty, councillor L, councillor Sain, councillor Peters, councillor Ruston, councillor Winter... Tell us something about them. councillor Wilson. So there are currently nine. I think if we increased it to nine, that would probably be too many in a committee. councillor Timpey, did you...
No, I was just going to say to make it easier, I can withdraw again, if you like.
It's entirely up to you. Is that a withdrawal? Thinking about it or...
No, no, just to make it even simpler.
It's your choice, or we can have a strike-out vote by having a general vote as to who's voting for everybody. You'll stay, okay?
No, no, I'll withdraw.
You're withdrawing?
Yeah.
Okay. That leaves nine, which are councillor Blagrove, councillor...
Eight.
Sorry, eight. councillor Blagrove, councillor Crotty, councillor L, councillor Sain, councillor Peters, councillor Ruston, myself and councillor Winter. So I need, if we're going to take those on block, I need a proposer and a seconder to take those on block with eight members.
Propose.
Propose by councillor Crotty, seconded, do I have a seconder? councillor Hunt, he had his name on. All those in favour of accepting those on block as eight members of the Finance and Audit Committee, please show. Any against? Any abstentions? So item eleven is to review and adopt appropriate standing orders and financial regulations. This is in accordance with what we need to do at this time of year, and probably supports what councillor Byrne said earlier, so I need a proposer and a seconder for that. councillor Drayson, you proposing? Thank you. councillor Byrne, seconding. All those in favour of accepting these appropriate standing orders and financial regulations, please show. That's carried unanimously. Okay, item twelve, to review arrangements, including legal arrangements with local authorities not for profit bodies and businesses. There are a whole list of them, for the benefit of my voice box, I don't intend to read all of them, but you've had the agenda, they are there. Unless anyone has any issues, I propose to take them on block, they are the list of people. councillor Drayson?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, is this something that the Finance Committee could look at the month before this meeting, so that we get the committee to look at it and recommend to us that we accept it, rather than, at the moment, seventeen councillors got asked to look at sort of twenty-year-old entries on our website?
I think that seems very reasonable, but for now, we have to agree this, and I think that whoever is on the Finance, the eight members have heard your suggestion, I'm sure one of them will put it as an agenda item on the next Finance Committee. Any other comments?
I've got one comment on T, CCTV contract?
Yes.
I noticed it ran out on the 31st of March, you've got funded £4,334.
Yeah.
Has that been put in for renewal, because it's for long-time maintenance?
We'll check that.
Okay.
It's a relatively new thing, us having the CCTV, we only took it on last year, so it's a very valid point.
It's long-time maintenance, we should be able to get it back.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Any other comments? Otherwise, it's a proposer and a seconder to move this forward. Any proposal? I'm going to show their hand. councillor Sain, do I have a seconder for that? councillor Crotty, all those in favour, please show your hands. Carried unanimously. Item thirteen, to review representation on or work with external bodies and arrangements for reporting back. So this is a list that has been agreed previously, with relevant councillors being attached to it, so I can't do these on block because there's different councillors on each external body. So RALC currently is councillor Jackson and councillor Thomas, and clearly, RALC's going to be a very important support mechanism to us in the next twelve months or so, so I'm looking for people who wish to represent us on RALC. councillor Jaclyn, councillor Thomas, councillor Sain, anyone else? Okay. First one, we have to have a vote. Okay, so I'll do it... Okay, so, I'll do it in alphabetical order, as that seems to be what I'm doing tonight, sorry councillor Pym.
I don't think we stipulated that we have to only have one or two people on the committee.
Yes, we do, RALC stipulated.
RALC do, don't they? So there's two.
We should only have one, but because we're the largest constituent body in Rother, we're permitted to have two plus a town clerk.
Is there, they're all interested about, sorry, we'll have that.
No, because I, we had to push last year to get a second one, so, and there were a lot of councils, some smaller councils that were concerned that Bexhill could come in and take over. Because obviously, we sent lots of people there, and it's representing the whole of Rother. Councillor Jaclyn?
As there are two seats, does that mean that councillors can vote for two people?
I think for the benefit of a strikeout, we have to ask them to vote for specific councillors, and the one with the lowest votes would then be withdrawn. Yeah. So, let's do it again in alphabetical order.
Sorry Chair.
So, there's three people that have put their names forward to be the RALC representatives, which is councillor Sain, councillor Jaclyn and councillor Thomas. Councillor Drayson?
I know you're trying to streamline it, but I don't understand what you said there, because that would, we should be voting, we could vote twice then, for two people. We can't do a knockout vote for one, and then you knock out the lowest one, because that would be...
The strikeout vote option still persists because it's in our standing orders.
So we drop out the lowest.
So the lowest one would drop out. Yeah, so we still have the strikeout vote, so the three of us here will be writing down who's voting for who. Because it's the only fair and logical way of doing it. So.
Just clever, we just get one vote on three people.
You can vote once for the three people that you wish.
Good, thank you.
But there'll only be one round?
Yes, because there's two places, so we only have to remove one. Okay?
If we vote for one person, the other two are out.
Potentially, then we'll only have one representative. Okay. On advice, what we're going to do is we'll all vote for the first person, and we'll vote for the second person, and we'll vote for the third person. Those season tickets. Yes, right. So, we're going to vote for the first vacancy first, so everyone can vote for who they wish to fill the first vacancy. All right?
And then we go again.
And then when they've been elected, we'll then have another vote to see who's going to fill the second position.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, that makes sense? So, we'll do it in alphabetical order, which is councillor Sain first. All those in favour of councillor Sain filling a position on RALC, please show your hands. Okay. All right. All those in favour of councillor Jaclyn fulfilling a role on RALC, please show your hand.
The first one.
The first role.
We can vote again, yeah?
For the second one.
No, surely if you've already voted, you can't vote again. No, it's not the second round.
So, if you've already voted, if you've already voted, you can't vote in this one, because we're applying for this first position. In the second round, you can vote again.
So all those in favour...
I thought we chose that, and we're going, sorry.
All those in favour of councillor Jaclyn. Okay. And although, and finally, all those in favour of councillor Thomas. Okay. So that makes it... Yeah, makes it straightforward in so much as... The scores are thirteen, three and zero, which means for the first one, councillor Sain has been elected, congratulations. You voted for councillor Jaclyn?
You did.
You voted for councillor Jaclyn? You can't vote for two people in the same round.
Okay, the second round.
But it doesn't matter, because we've got a second round, so the second round voting is, again in alphabetical order. Please show your hands, all those in favour of councillor Jaclyn fulfilling the second role at RALC, please show your hands. Okay. Sorry, can you please raise your hands again? And... And all those in favour of councillor Thomas, please show your hands. Okay, that confirms that councillor Jaclyn is the second representative for Bexhill County Town Council at RALC. Thirteen B is Sisson's advice, last year it was councillor Byrne. Anybody wish to stand, it is councillor Byrne prepared to carry out the role. Councillor Crotty? You wishing to stand?
Yep.
Are you standing even this year for CAB? I don't know, probably not. We've only ever had one, so I think we should stick to one. So this is a straightforward vote, which is a lot more easy to understand for all of us. So, all those in favour of, this is for the CAB external representative. All those in favour of councillor Crotty, please show your hand. All those in favour of councillor Byrne, please show your hand. That's carried eleven to three, so that remains as councillor Byrne. Thirteen C is Bexhill Air Cadet Squadron. It's currently down to the mayor. I've had no interaction at all this year. Do we wish for that to carry on? I'd be quite happy if somebody else takes that on, but I've had no interaction, so I don't really know. Councillor Drayson?
I was gonna suggest, we don't, if you've had no inter, interaction.
I haven't, but previous mayors have, and it is an integral part. Councillor Pym?
Yeah, I sit on the air cadet committee, and we have been sending information to Bexhill Town Council to have the mayor attended. When we first started off this town council, we realised it was here, and a historic role that hadn't been fulfilled for some time, that the mayor was always on the RAF Cadet Squadron Committee, and so that we wish that that continue. I very much hope it does continue, and I hope that you can see yourself attending one of the meetings this year.
Is it the wish that we carry this on?
I think so.
Okay. Can I ask councillor Pym, as you're on the committee, does it have to be the mayor, or could it be mayor slash deputy?
Um, I would hope it could be mayor slash deputy, yeah, if that's the case.
Okay. Let's leave it on there, and if they request the mayor slash deputy, then it's in their hands if they want us to come along and do anything. Of course, as we all know, I can only go if I'm invited, sorry. So, okay, we'll move on from that one. Bexhill Maritime, last year it was councillor Timpy. Happy to carry on with that? Anybody else wish to get involved? Otherwise, I will move on, no hands shown. Littlegate Farm, last year it was councillor Jaclyn?
Yeah, I would like to hand that over or for it to be discontinued.
Okay. I've been to Littlegate Farm, we know where they are and we know what they do, we've had some interaction previously. What's the wish of this council? Councillor Winter?
I'm happy to be the representative, depending on what the council decide.
It's on the list, if you put yourself forward and councillor Jaclyn isn't, that's councillor Drayson?
I'll just say, what does the council benefit from having somebody go to Littlegate Farm?
Realistically, not a great deal, bar it's supporting people with, who may be there from Bexhill, who need support to gain potential employment. It's a support mechanism.
That's what they, that's what they can gain from having input from a councillor, what does this council gain from having a representative on Littlegate Farm?
I might just say, we don't lose anything by just supporting them, that's what I would say. We may not gain anything, but we get to support them, and why not? If the councillor's willing to go and support them, I think we should just keep it there and keep it going.
Councillor Jaclyn?
Happy for councillor Winter to take over to answer councillor Drayson's question. I mean, Rother have worked with them, but obviously Rother were going to disappear, but not yet.
I believe it was councillor Cook's chosen charity two years ago.
Sorry, just wanna clarify there, I've got nothing against Littlegate Farm. And I don't want to not support Littlegate Farm, and they're welcome to come here and ask for grants, and they've asked Bexhill Trust for grant, but it was only whether or not we have a representative.
Any other comments? Anyone else wishing to?
A second, pardon.
Okay, we've got a proposer and a seconder, all those in favour of councillor Winter. That's carried unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, the neighbourhood, it should be the neighbourhood board, so I'm on, I'm a member of the neighbourhood board as a resident, and I happen to be a councillor. So it's one of the two things, so it's not a choice to elect me on to the town board, and there isn't a position for another town councillor to be on the neighbourhood board. However, in the last week, the Chair of the town board, the neighbourhood board, has written to our town clerk, offering the town clerk a position on the full neighbourhood board. So, we have the opportunity of deciding whether we wish whoever is fulfilling the role of town clerk to be on the town board. And it's for us to say whether we want that to happen. So, personally, being a town board member, I think it's crucial as we move forward that the town council are represented as fully as possible. The Chair of the neighbourhood board doesn't have to have a town councillor on it, it's not part of the mandate from government. But, the Chair has looked at it, and after a year of it being in place, has decided to offer the town clerk a position on the full neighbourhood board, which I think is a really positive move. So, I can take questions, otherwise councillor Drayson?
I'd just, I'd like to see that invitation, I'd like to see what the neighbourhood board expect to get from our clerk, is it to work for them? Is it to, I just, you know, we're told that we've received a letter.
So the invitation, you wouldn't, because it's received in an operational role, as to be a representative in that operational role. Councillor Crotty?
Thank you Chair, really, is the town clerk gonna be having, with all the workload that she's got at the moment, or they've got at the moment, would it be more pressure?
So, to be clear, the neighbourhood board meets four times a year, and the meeting is an hour and a half. So it's six hours over a year, maximum. There's no work for the town clerk, because there is a full-time employee, and there's another person being recruited as of today. So there would be no physical work to be involved by the town clerk. It is just to be there representing the town council to ensure that everything that we are doing is involved within it for the future. Councillor Timpy?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be an excellent idea, because to not be on it leaves the town council totally out of the picture. And we need to be, it's very crucial that we know everything that's going on, not secondhand. So I would, can I just say motion that, please?
Okay, I'm just gonna go around the table, part of the motion, councillor Cowan.
Okay, just to be clear, are you on the, on the town board as a resident or a councillor, or both?
I am on the town, the neighbourhood board as a resident, and I happen to be a town councillor.
So you're not a councillor on the town board?
No.
So we need to be represented with a councillor on the town board, not as a resident? And my second question would be, is it the clerk, the current clerk, or whoever will be the clerk, who lives a continuing role? Or the clerk that sits in, in situ now, will they continue to, or I'd say stepped away?
No, it will be whoever is fulfilling the role as town clerk of Bexhill Town Council.
So that'd just be a continuation, okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Pym?
Yeah, I think it's crucial that we have the opportunity of the town clerk being involved in the neighbourhood board. It does give us, luckily, the chance to have two people there. And also, it means that should one not be able to make one of the meetings, there is an alternative person there. So, yeah, I think so, it's a yes.
Just to add, I haven't missed a single meeting, but I have got provision to send a deputy as well, so we would always have two around that table. Councillor Crotty?
Thank you Chair, I was under the impression that when Lorna Ford invited you to be on that board, that you was acting as a town councillor for Bexhill. You've only now mentioned residents, so I was under, I was under the belief that you were our councillor for that, so I'd rather have someone from Bexhill Town Council standing.
Just to be, again, very clear, I was invited as a resident of Bexhill, there was a lot of confusion, but as we know, if you're a resident of Bexhill and are a town councillor, you could, your formative role is of a town councillor, because that supersedes, but I'm there as a resident. So I've represented any motions that town council have come up with, I haven't spoken out of turn, I've kept to facts, and I'm a resident on there. And this will open the door to make further representation around the town board, I happen to be a town councillor. But in two years' time, I may not be a town councillor, but I will still be on the board, unless Abby asks me not to. So this will enable representation longer term, if I'm not ever a town councillor, or whatever role I fulfil. Councillor Drayson?
Yeah, I got through that on my own with councillor Cowan's question, because it's, it's sort of imprecise having you shown then on this list as a neighbourhood board member, as councillor Wilson. Because the council's representative would be the clerk. You're the bonus, but any reports to the council about what's happened at the neighbourhood board should come from the clerk, because the clerk would be representing the council. So I've got no problem with the clerk going on there, because obviously, it's the town, neighbourhood boards...
Yeah.
To invite who they want on to it.
There are guidelines, and the guidelines were not to invite at the time parish and town clerks, but those guidelines have flexed a little bit. Which is why the Chair of the neighbourhood board is able to make this suggestion, and I think it gives us a lot more visibility of what's going on. Not necessarily now, because we're still creating the framework for April next year when funding starts. Councillor Jaclyn?
I like the idea of the town clerk being on board, just for clarity, are you able to say, is your position on it, how permanent is it? And what arrangements are there for Rother District Council and East Sussex, do they have officers, councillors or people who are also councillors?
So, under the rules, there has to be, Rother District Council are the statutory body that manages it, so they have to have representation. So the administrative side of it is by Rother District Council employees, there are Rother District councillors on the board, and there is an East Sussex county councillor on the board who's here tonight as well. So there's a, but in the paperwork that came from the government that set it up, there was no provision to have anyone from the town council or a parish council. That's now flexed, and the Chair has decided to use her authority. I will be on there for as long as the Chair requires my input into it. When she decides I'm past my sell-by date, she may choose another resident to go on there. Councillor El?
If councillor Timpey's motion is a motion, I'd like to second it.
Okay, we have a proposal and a second. Anybody else wish to debate it before we go to a vote? Okay?
Can I just say something? What are we motioning?
That we accept the offer that the town clerk is appointed to the neighbourhood board.
Okay. Could we, could we put that on hold for a month, just because there's some reasons why?
Yeah, I understand that, but is, would that, the other things we have to resolve, would that stop it? Because at some point, it doesn't, we don't have to, whoever goes to the next meeting, but at some point in the future.
Would it specifically, what I'd like to say, would it specifically be for the town clerk? Could we say maybe the deputy as well, or would that be in that role?
I don't see that would be an issue. So, we could amend that to say the town clerk or deputy town clerk. So long as operationally...
Or an officer. Or an officer, yeah, if that's okay, just as we, so we're not specifically saying town clerk, if that's okay?
So, the amended motion would be to accept the appointment of the town clerk or a senior officer. That will cover to the neighbourhood board. Does that make sense? Then that could be any of the senior management team within the Bexhill Town Council. Okay, we've got a proposal, we've got a second. Councillor El, all those in favour, please show your hand.
Just to be clear, what's the motion again for?
This is for an appointment to the neighbourhood board.
Yeah, the town clerk or senior member of the town clerk.
Yeah. All those in favour, please show your hand.
I'm just going to say, because again, we're then verging on dictating to the neighbourhood board, it's a clerk or somebody else. Should we actually defer this until the position of clerk has been resolved? Because I just think, it's like us saying, we'll send somebody else instead. If the invitation is to the town clerk, then it's not for us to change the neighbourhood applications.
I'll take your point.
Invitation.
Okay. Let's defer that to the next full council meeting, because I don't think it will make a lot of difference one month. Councillor Pym?
I think we should go ahead with the acceptance, the accepting the appointment of the town clerk, and then the town clerk can seek whether it's possible to have a deputy.
So, we're now amending the amendment.
Back to the original.
To accept the offer of the town clerk. All those in favour of that motion, please. Any against? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. So, that's carried. Coombe Valley's CIC is councillor Jaclyn. I believe you've been appointed director of that, so we can't be removing his director. Are you happy to carry it on?
Yeah.
And the final one in this category is thirteen H. It's a Chamber of Commerce itinerary fund assessment panel, which I'll take the opportunity reminding everyone that there's a twenty-five thousand pound fund that the chamber have for projects that they may have. And I'm on the panel that will decide, and I'm more than happy to carry that on. They specifically asked for me. We haven't met yet, so unless anybody else wishes to do that, I suggest we move on. Councillor Pym?
If they're open for another councillor to go on it, I'm happy to put myself forward for it.
The request only came through for one.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're trying to decide in now, isn't it?
Yes. But they specifically asked for me.
So, why have we put it to the voting?
It's not a necessary vote, it's a list of people who are external bodies.
Sorry, I thought we were going to vote for it.
It's difficult because they specifically asked for me if we do a vote on it and appoint somebody else, and we may not have somebody on that panel, which may not support our businesses, so. Councillor Byrne?
Perhaps you could clarify, did they ask for you as Paul Wilson or you as mayor?
That is a very good question.
I thought so.
The reason it's a very good question, I'm not sure I can answer it because I cannot remember.
With all due respect, even if you could answer it, the answer would be academic, given that you are still mayor.
That is true as well. Shall we move on?
My honourable friend has a point.
Okay, item fourteen of our agenda, to review inventory of land and other assets, including buildings and office equipment, which was provided in appendix H. So, again, I think this is probably quite tricky to go through all of these at full council, but it is a requirement that we review it and get it agreed at this particular meeting. I see a bunch of numbers that is agreed on the AGAR, which is the internal audit that we have to have done. So, if it's in our internal audit, if there's anything wrong with it, you would imagine it would be picked up on the AGAR. Is that the right answer? So, if there's anything wrong with it, it would have been highlighted by the internal audit. Councillor Pym?
Just want to see clarification. I was under the impression that the town council actually owned all the allotments. It's only got two allotments on here. The others have been managed by other companies.
I'll pass that over to my learning colleague. We've reviewed that, so we don't have to do anything else to that. Item fifteen, to confirm the arrangements for insurance cover in respect of all reasonable or insurable risks. This is appendix I, which is from our insurance company. This is a renewal which is under the control of finance, so we just need to confirm that that's acceptable. So, I need a proposal and a second to accept that. Councillor Sandy proposing? Do I have a second of councillor Pym? All those in favour, please raise your hand as usual. Carried unanimously. Item sixteen, to review council and or star subscriptions to other bodies. And there are two that we're reviewing, which is E.S.A.L.K. and R.A.L.C. And R.A.L.C. includes the G.O. X-Sphere mapping and the National Allotment Society. So, first off, we need to review it. We reviewed it. I think it's crucial we stay members of that right now. Councillor Drayson?
Yeah, it's just, as I said earlier, when you referred to R.A.L.C. and the membership of R.A.L.C., can we just remember that they give advice? Not instructions, not directions to blindly follow. It's advice.
Yes. And National Allotment Society, I propose to, we've reviewed them, so if no one's got any issues, I'll move on. Item seventeen, to review the council's complaint procedure, which is in appendix J. Has been in place for some time. It was adopted in May twenty-two, and there haven't been any issues, I don't believe. Councillor Thomas?
Isn't it time to update the complex procedure?
Potentially, that probably follows on from what councillor Byrne was saying earlier about reviewing things, so. But for now, we have to agree this and we can review it afterwards. It's the time of year where we review all of our policies. So, we just have to review it right now, which I'm sure we all have done at home prior to the meeting. So, I'm moving on to item eighteen, to review council policies, procedures and practice in respect of its obligations under freedom of information and data protection legislation. And there was a link in there, and I'm personally pretty confident that we covered with that because we haven't had any issues yet. We have had freedom of information requests. So, we are just reviewing that. All happy with that? Any questions? If not, I shall move on to item nineteen, which is a review of council's policy for dealing with press and media, which is K. Appendix K. So, you've all looked at it, reviewed it. It's been in place now for some time, and I think it works. So, happy to move on? No one raising any hands, this is promising. Item twenty, review of council's employment policies and procedures. There's a link on the agenda to go and look at all of those. We've reviewed those, happy with all of those. No hands raised, so I'll move on to item twenty-one. The reviewing of council's expenditure incurred under section one three seven of the Government Act and the nineteen seventy-two or the general power competence, that's under the transparency code. There's links on to our website with all the details. No hands being raised, so we're happy we've reviewed that. I'll move on to item twenty-two. Determining the time and place of ordering meetings in the council, up to and including the next annual meeting, which you have there, very pictorially, which is, they are the dates. This is to determine them, so we can't just review it, we have to determine them. Councillor Drayson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've got no problem with the dates. My problem is with the time. Bearing in mind many councillors work, six P M. seems ridiculously early. We want more and more councillors who aren't in the retired category. So, I would like to suggest meetings start at either six thirty or seven. I'd probably start at seven and let people put in an amendment to it. But I think we shouldn't have a six o'clock start, it should be later.
Okay, councillor Crotty?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, as someone who watches, this is very easy to read and understand, and it's really great. So, I'm really appreciative of this.
Okay. Any other comments? Councillor Pym?
Yeah, I wonder whether the clerk could let us know how far the negotiations have gone with Rother District Council as for usage of the town hall and the villas that are next door? Because if we are seeking to relocate, would these dates be okay to use within the town hall?
I can answer that. It's later on in the agenda.
Oh, fair enough.
I think the answer is yes, they would still be available. So, I think the only issue is the timing, and we have to be aware of the officers that work for the council. It would mean that they would then be getting home one hour later every day. I accept what councillor Drayson's saying, that we have people who work and we want more people to want to join the town council. But it does concern me on the welfare of our team, who would then have to change their life and maybe start an hour later and then not get home for an hour later. Councillor Ruston?
Sorry, Chair, I disagree with that. As with any workplace, if this is the business of the council and that's the times we work within, that plan has to be made to be, as a councillor that works full-time, he doesn't finish work until R five, I could turn the table there and say, that's why I can't come. So, yeah.
There's many sides to every story. Councillor Jaclyn?
I would welcome a move to half past six.
Okay.
I said nothing about extending the end time. I think nine P M. is still a reasonable time to finish. Bearing in mind that we could always suspend standing orders if there was a really important item we were discussing.
I believe there's a time, there's not a time limit.
We'll make it two and a half hours then, if we went half-six, it could be two and a half hours, not three.
I think there's a limited, that is. Okay, any other comments? Councillor Carroll?
I think six thirty is better. Like, today I'll finish at ten past five personally, and it becomes a struggle to do everything. But I do agree with councillor Drayson that there's no need to finish any later.
So, we can change it to six thirty if we wish to? Just need a proposal.
Six thirty.
And do we have a second for that? Councillor Carroll? Do we have any other proposals on timings? We've got a motion that we start, a meeting we finish at no later than nine o'clock unless we suspend standing orders for something really important. So, show hands, all those in favour? That's unanimous. So, as from soon, meetings will commence at six thirty. I'm rather hoping that...
So, is it all meetings or just the, just for all meetings?
All meetings. I hope it doesn't affect our contract we have with our videoing. So, that's good news, it doesn't. Excellent, thank you. So, with that, I'll then move on.
Chair, sorry, can I just ask, where is it later in the agenda about the place of meetings?
Yeah, it's under twenty-eight A.
Oh, okay, because if we can, depending on what is said there, because if it relates to it and we're agreeing on the time and the place of these...
It's the update in twenty-eight A which will lead on to...
So, could we go back then to talking about the place of meetings? Because if this is to agree the place and the time, I don't want to go past it and not be able to go back to it. Because we agreed quite a long time ago that we would make a conscious effort to get round the town with meetings. I understand it's difficult to do, depending on availability, but we've been here quite a while now. There's a lot of stuff coming up in the next twelve months. And I would really like the council to make a bit more, yeah, to be more open and available and start spreading about like we used to in the early days when we didn't have so much. And we're doing more than ever now. So, whether or not you could give that update on the location now, so that we could...
Okay.
...forward something. I don't know the best way to do it.
I'm conscious that we have members of the public that may just wish to speak. If it's okay with you, I'll bring it forward to after the public participation. And we'll put the Rother District Council, so item at twenty-eight will now be after twenty-three.
Just so, yeah, we can just add that to your...
Yeah, okay. So, I compromise. Okay, so, happy with item twenty-two? So, we move on to item twenty-three, which is public participation. Great to see members of the public here tonight. There's a speech that I have to read out, but I'm not going to because I've seen most of you before. But you have the opportunity of addressing the town council for up to three minutes. Could you just please raise your hand if you wish to speak? We have one member, so that's great. If you could, Paul, come up to the microphone there, just at the end of the table there, introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes to speak, so.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your appointment.
Thank you.
And also, town councillors, for the wonderful work you're doing. I really think this town's going forward now, and you can take great credit in doing it. It is along those lines. I went to your last event for V D eighty, which was very well supported. Lots of feedback, think it's great, and it's just one of many events you've been involved in. And I would like, while I've got the floor, to take this opportunity to mention Sussex Day, which is June the sixteenth. And I'd like as many of you as possible to come along to the new beach garden, where the charter's going to be read at twelve noon. So, once again, well done for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public, second chance to say something? Otherwise, I'll move on to the agenda. So, we're now going to have agenda item twenty-eight. So, it's first off to receive the notes of the latest, which were sent out, albeit very late. But that's because of all the times, the time restrictions that there are at the moment. Has everybody seen the notes? I do have a spare copy because I printed it off twice. I do have a spare copy because I printed it off twice. So I'll just summarise. Marina Gardens, there was some disappointment over some of the plants that arrived that weren't up to specification. So it's been a little bit of a delay because they've been sent back as not being up to spec. So that's going to take probably another couple of weeks to get that planted out. But generally, there's been no adverse comments around Marina Gardens, which is really good. It was noted that Bexhill Town Council have done expression of interest under war memorials. And we have had a letter very late today from the Royal British Legion for Little Common, but it wasn't in time to send it out, so that will be going on to the next agenda item. We've got some answers to that. Great news that the statute declaration for the lease of Peppham has been signed. So that's really positive news. It's now with our solicitor to check that lease. So I'm really hopeful that we can make that happen very, very soon. So it's got over the next hurdle, which is really promising, so that was good news. And it is well worth saying that the people that were there from Rother praised and gave congratulations to the town council for a very successful V E day. They were impressed. And I'm only passing on their congratulations to all of us that were involved with it. It was received very well, I believe. We then talked about asset transfers and other things. And the thing that was mentioned was the villas. Work is being done. Our clerk has sent information to Rother about our requirements for the villas. And there is a distinct possibility that we will be able to utilise the villas imminently. The clerk's working out how to best use that with the hub and where people are sitting and that needs some sort of confidential discussions around how we manage it. So there is the opportunity for extra workspace. And we've also, more than likely, we're just waiting for it to be confirmed, but to be able to use the town hall for our meetings in the future as well. So there's some really positive conversations around the table. We then spoke at length about what was agreed, about expressions of interest for assets that were available. And there was a decision made by the C E O of Rother. How can I explain? Our poor R F O can't copy and paste into every single item, even though it's very, very similar. She has to type into every single expression of interest and it's taking far, far too long. So the C E O of Rother has put an offer on the table to us to get round in a room with officers of Rother, some councillors and some councillors from the Bexhill Town Council and come up with a rough plan as to what is likely to be up for offer. To save an awful lot of, because it's not just the administration from the town council point of view, it goes to the other end of the chain. And then Rother have to do an awful lot of work. So Lorna Ford has put it on the table that why don't we just sit in a room and chat this through? So we have the opportunity of a number of us, whoever we choose, that there's talk of having potentially three officers, potentially two or three Rother councillors in the room and some of the town councillors in the room. I think it would be, it would be difficult if every single one would have said, yes, I'd like to be in that room. We've got to trust each other that we're going to do what's right in accordance with the conversations we've already had around assets, but that is up for us. If we choose not to take that option, then it will then have to be placed for the R F O to then go through lots and lots of typing because you cannot copy and paste from one to another. So that's on the table to have that type of asset discussion. So the first point was the villas. Our requirements have been sent to Rother, we're waiting for them to come back. It's likely that we will be able to use the villas, but we don't know how much, but the suggestion is it won't be that much.
Chair, just for the benefit of people watching, the villas are the two houses to the left of the town hall as you look at it. Because I know a lot of people out there wouldn't know what you were talking about.
That's very good clarity, thank you. Council Jacklin?
You referred to what I would call form submission problems. Is it possible just to say we have created note one, which outlines our position? And to put that in every time?
Yeah, it doesn't work like that. It would be nice to be able to, but for each asset that you want to express an interest, you've got to go and fill in one form for every single asset. And if you take, if Rother, if East Sussex do that, that means our R F O is going to have to do every single piece of grass that is in Bexhill.
Flexibility of the system, definitely, yeah.
So is that, so I deal with these two quite key things. One is the villas, which I think might have answered the sort of, it doesn't get us out into the community as much, but we will have issues with our recording if we go into other sites, but that's for this council to decide whether we want to do that. And then the second bit is, do we want to get a number of us in a room to talk about what is likely to be expressed interest in? Council Earl?
Maybe it could be down to the amenities committee?
When is the date of the next amenities committee?
Or an extraordinary meeting with the committee, there with the amenities committee?
It is something that we need to regress quite quickly. So July would be too late.
Well, it would be quite a long discussion anyway, so it wouldn't fit in a normal meeting. It probably has to be an extraordinary meeting.
I feel the way a C E O of Rother was explaining it is if we were to choose a number of councillors who wish to be involved in that and then we'll set it up like inside the next two weeks, and that was from last Friday. That was the sort of time span that we were looking at.
Can I just add, or anyone else just says anything, is that obviously this is just a discussion with Rother to sort of get the feeler out there of what is realistic that they can actually pass over rather than where we've said just everything. It's realistic what they can tell us, this is what we can give you. We don't have to agree to it, we can obviously then go back and say, no, actually, we want to express an interest in everything, so I just want to let everyone know that. It is, but it will be, Rother will be more realistic with what they're going to give us basically and then give us a thing to go with if we want to agree to that or say no and still go for everything and then that's up to everyone here really.
Council Carroll?
Chair, I think it should have come down to the amenities, I think it should be a full council decision because we've all got a vested interest in what's going forward. And that's rising and maybe it will come down if three people put their hands up. So be it, and if six are up, we have to go to the vote and the situation will raise numbers out to get the three. But that's where I am, but I think everyone around the tables here have all got a strong interest in that.
Yeah, okay. Council Plim?
Whilst I like the idea of what's been proposed, I'm a bit alarmed that we seem to be creating a committee or a working party without any terms of reference. So we're going to have councillors going along to a meeting, making decisions with R D C councillors, but no terms of reference to work to.
There's no decision making involved. It's just to go and have a chat. Nothing more, nothing less.
Much like an extended version of the leaders meeting.
You could look at it like that, yeah, it's just a general chat to try and see whether there's any common interest, because everybody was involved in that discussion that we had. And a clerk was there at the time and she didn't see it as an issue to have this general chat. But if it's a wish of this council not to be involved in that and we'll default back to the expression of interest process, then we can do that, this is just an extra. Because Lorna Ford was a little bit astounded when it was explained how long the process takes. I'm coming around, Council Crossy?
Thank you Chair. Would that mean that we'd be doing the same thing with East Hertfordshire Council?
We don't know.
I think it's a good idea. We have a long list of things, which is too long and we failed to prioritise. So some kind of meaningful discussion as to what they expect the principal authority to be able to do.
Yep.
For example, if that's libraries and cemeteries, then maybe we're less interested in those and what they expect us to be able to do.
Okay.
So what is town council's public remit in the future would be hot for that.
Okay, Council Byrne?
My understanding was that it'll be a two-way discussion. Rother are currently looking at what they would be allowed to offer us.
Yeah.
So merely because we've got a big list of assets, it's not, it's the legal position that they wouldn't necessarily be allowed to devolve those to us. So it is, it is a two-way split, we will be asking for some things and being told, sorry, that's not up for grabs. So as Council Jacklin said, that process will narrow the list, which can then be discussed around the table with everyone having an input, but it takes, it makes the task more manageable.
Council Dyson?
Two points, a good idea, as was said earlier, what would we lose from it? Which is nothing, but given the sort of suspicion in this room about double hatters, can we have a double hatter space? Because I can see four of us not getting picked by this council and also not getting picked by Rother because we're on Bexhill Town Council. We're going to have three, three and one.
I'll try and answer that. As far as I'm concerned, if a district councillor is appointed as a town councillor, when they're here, they're a town councillor. That's how I see things. Unfortunately, other people away from the town council may do things differently and we have to be aware of that. But this is an opportunity for us to, as a town council, benefit from having four double hatters around the table.
Thank you Chair, could I just add to that as well and say, and actually, Bexhill is at the centre of my interest.
Yep.
It doesn't matter what council I'm with.
Just going to go around once more, Council Sane?
Yeah, I completely agree with Council Byrne, what he said. But what I would like to add is, I'm going to come back to you in a minute actually, because I've just come up with something else, so can I pass it on?
Council Earl?
I also agree with Council Byrne, however, if there is a more small, if there's a smaller and more concise list, do we really have to have a meeting for them to tell us about it if that's the only reason? Could we not get the narrowed down list beforehand and be able to talk about that if there is such a thing?
Now my depth is remembered, he's going to say, I'll come back to you.
So I just, I will come back to you on that as well, if that's okay. But it is quite, we're going to have quite a few officers there that will be able to explain why they're only giving us whatever they're going to. But what I'd like to come back with, with Council Byrne is obviously, we will, we understand that there are legal terms of what they can pass over, but when it comes to that, Rother do need to let us know or show us these legal terms when we get to that stage. Because we have had a few discussions where they haven't shown us and just said, you know, this is, you can't have it because of this, well, okay, show us, and then they haven't sort of proved it.
I fully, I fully agree with you that they're not handing that down in tablets of stone. If they say we're not allowed to, why, where's the source of material and why aren't you allowed?
And then we have to be realistic and know that it's written down, they can't give it over.
And as do they.
Yeah, and we drop it, but they do have to show us.
What they would like, unless there's a real solid reason that they can't even consider it. Having considered it, it will develop.
We have to be sensible and accept that there may be legal terms that we cannot have it.
Yeah.
And we can't just keep saying, well, we want it, well, no, they can't give it to us, that's it, it's over, you know? Because we have had those discussions before in the council where we keep saying, and it's explained to say, well, you can't, well, we want it, yeah, but you can't, so.
The other real advantage of having this round table is we have to remember that Bexhill is one of many parishes and there's two other town councils in Rother. The Rother leaders only meet with us, they don't meet with everyone else. So they are working on building a relationship. And this is another example where they want to talk to us, the officers want to talk to us to get the right answers, not just for us, but for Rother. And they put this offer on the table just to Bexhill Town Council, not to anyone else. So I think, if I had to make a decision right now, I would say we should do this, but we have to do it in a really controlled way. And with regret, all eighteen, seventeen councillors won't be able to be in the room. So we've all got to trust each other, whatever number we agree to go there, we'll have to choose those and we're trying to set it up. So, because I know from experience, having seventeen councillors here trying to please you all when you all want to say something is really difficult. When you get into a room with officers, and of course we'll take officers from the town council with us as well, so it's likely to be up to a dozen people in the room. So it has to be really carefully controlled, otherwise it will be a pointless activity and nothing like this will ever happen again. So this is an opportunity to us to try and, it's no decision making, but it's for people to go there and understand it and then bring it back to the full council to see where we go from there. And I think it's a great opportunity and one not to be missed. But I'm just one councillor, I need everybody to agree. So I would like to put a motion forward that we agree to send people first. So we'll have a vote on that if I can get a second, then we'll work out how we choose.
And our second?
Right, we've got a proposal and a second to support this. All those in favour of supporting this type of principle? All those against? Any extensions? Okay, that's carried. So now, I've briefly told you how many people will be around the table, there's likely to be-
That's right, Council Earl? Good point, maybe potentially a councillor from each ward.
Council from each ward would give you eight. Nine. Is that many?
I mean, there was a mention of, there was a mention when we were there that they said around six.
Yeah.
I'm sure we could squeeze nine and then that would make it quite easy that you'd have one from each ward.
So-
So six includes officers?
No, it was six, there was a mention of around six councillors plus whoever they bring along.
So maybe that is a very good answer. Thank you, Council Earl. If it goes wrong, it won't be my fault, it'll be Council Earl's. But if we, if-
I just think you've got representation for each ward.
So if each ward councillor talks to their opposition, their joint ward councillor and decide who wants to represent that ward and email into the town clerk which one is going to represent that ward. So you decide amongst yourselves, like for Sidley, Peppham, and emailing and then we'll put those names forward. I would ask if you could do it as soon as possible, because time is of the critical. Okay, that means we don't have to vote on that, I don't think. It does depend upon when they can get the officers free, but I think, colleague on the right has said, I think we need to put a time limit on when councillors will put a name forward. And I would suggest by five o'clock Friday. We're all here. I think do it outside of the meeting. Email into the town clerk by five o'clock Friday, who's representing which one.
Or if we know now.
If you know now. The resolution is that one councillor per ward will be nominated between the two councillors to represent us in this, let's call it a workshop. Decide. Yes. I'll vote on that. Can we have a resolution to agree that, that it's one councillor per ward with a cut-off time by five o'clock Friday that it is submitted to the town clerk? That's my proposal, lots of hands going up.
Could we not just go around the table really quick and give your names? One email, it's going to give so much work.
If you want to do it after this meeting, but I want to move on to the other things. So by five o'clock Friday, per ward, one councillor name, if not before five o'clock.
Just to make it easier, is there like the subject of the email, would you like a specific ping so you know what the subject is?
R D C meeting?
R D C meeting. Okay. The rest of the leaders' meeting is, again, it was all very positive, there was a lot of information shared around when the town rangers are likely to be in place. And it was just a very good opening. It was a very good discussion about things. Everything we're doing at the moment, Rother are very pleased, they like what's going on. They certainly have seen a huge improvement in the activities that we've been up to, so it is being noticed, so. But if you have any questions with regard to that, I would suggest you email either myself or Council Sane afterwards and we can talk to you, but because that's only come out recently. Okay?
Just one more thing they did mention as well, the relationship with the town council is going really well as well this year. They said, you know, we're getting on really well and that we're working together, which is great. So I know there's been discussions where town council and Rother haven't agreed, but we are actually getting there and working together rather than against each other, so, yeah.
It was really positive and if that carries on through devolution, I think it will put us all in a good stand. So I'm going to move on now, if that's all right. Oh no, I've got to look at the rest of this. I've mentioned the little common wall memorial. We have received a letter, but it was very late today, so that's going to be carried forward to the next meeting. And I've mentioned already about the statutory declaration and it's with a solicitor, so that's, that's all good. So I'm now going to move on to item twenty-four, which is the mayor's office. So you have my report, and this time I'm going to read it out. And it starts, "And", very difficult to start a statement with "and", but I have. "And we have arrived with my final report of the mayoral year of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And I was surprised that it was by far mine and the deputy's busiest month by some distance. We've attended over twenty events, a few very good events to mention. The great work completed on Shelter Four was one of them, down on the seafront, East Parade. Most poignant events were, of course, the VE Day, the importance of remembering for future generations to enable us to remember those that gave their lives for our benefit. I cannot explain the worry that I had with regard to lighting the beacon. I will always remember, and I'm painting the picture, I'm standing there with a twelve-foot shaky pot, having been shown where I had to ignite it in daylight, and it was dark. And I have the igniter there, which had been tested, and I have our town clerk next to us, John, supporting me because it starts to wobble after four or five minutes. And nothing's happening. And I get this whisper in my right ear from our town clerk, John, and he suddenly says, "There's no smoke without fire." And suddenly in seconds it went whoosh. So I do seriously thank the town clerk for giving me the, the confidence to still hold that cock, which was quite awkward. Finally, I will mention the Bexhill Academy Awards evening that I've done a post on, and it was an amazing event. Four years, seven to ten to see how they've progressed. And if there are any parents or carers that have children at Bexhill Academy, I have no doubt that they will be well-prepared for adulthood, because it's, it's, it's amazing what they're doing there. The head teacher is incredible. The year heads are amazing. And I left there thinking, I wish I'd gone to Bexhill Academy when I was at school. That's how it made me feel when I left there. And one of the trustees, Christine Bayless, made a very heartfelt statement. And everybody was engaged. There was something like eleven hundred people there. And it was absolutely right. It's the first time for ages that they've held that back at the Delawar Pavilion. And it was right that those sorts of events are held at the Delawar and long may that continue. So that was very impressive, I felt. And attached to it is our long list, including various events. I don't know, but it is what it is. The PCN presentation today at the Delawar Pavilion was another great event with lots of workshops and organisations that support people's health and wellbeing. And if only people knew what health support there was out there. I don't know if anyone else went, but I found it quite interesting. So that is my mayor's report. So I move on to item twenty-five. Reports from councillors. To receive reports from district county councillors. We have one here tonight. The floor is yours, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, fellow councillors. I'd like to thank, first of all, councillor Plim for arranging, together with your town clerk or ex-town clerk, Julian Miller, the strengthening local relationships. It's a standard process where parishes and towns can meet with the highways officers. When we had two or three officers from East Sussex County Council, you've now got that conduit to report any highways defects through a system and a mechanism. So thank you, Paul, for chairing that, which you chaired very well. Also, I'd like to thank councillor Blagrove for the Rother forum where Simon Yates, chief inspector, came along and gave a presentation on the DISC. We know that we've had lots of antisocial behaviour, shop thefts around the town. The retail outlets in town can apply for this DISC system, not just in Bexhill, but throughout Rother. If you have any issues with it, go first of all to your Rother councillor, and then it's going to go, I believe, through Jimmy Sanger, who is the community support area. If you have any problems with not getting through, come to me and we'll liaise with the police to do that. Update about devolution and local government reorganisation. We all know that on the twenty-first of March, a interim plan was put forward to the government with, together with Rother and the five other boroughs. So the sixth was put forward a plan. We received, on the seventh of May, the day before D-Day, we received a feedback report from the government, which I've seen, the Rother officers, I believe, have seen. It's supposed to be a public document. I believe it has been published, I told you it was. Have been told that it was. It's the feedback from the government as to our next steps, where we've got to provide by, I think, twenty-sixth of September, have I got that right, a final submission to the government. There's going to be a lot of work being done about all the way that the devolution and the local government reorganisation will take, where Rother aren't going to be annihilated, they're going to be merged with a new unitary authority. So it's a merger of councils and all the work that the officers currently do, all the facilities. And in that feedback form, there is a chapter, first paragraph, on how you can retain local representation, whether it be area committee, town council. For example, Brighton, Eastbourne, Hastings haven't got town councils. They haven't got that local structure. How do they want that to, to be created in East Sussex? That's for them to decide. In Bexhill, we're lucky that we have already got yourselves very able, fit, enthusiastic about Bexhill. So we're very well placed, I believe, and you're going through the right processes. Any questions?
Any questions from the floor for councillor Hollage?
Any guesses as to where this government feedback document that is in the public domain might be found?
I'll try and look for it. No, it's on my laptop, but it's supposed to be done by East Sussex and it's supposed to be out there. I'll make sure you get it.
That's for all councillors.
Well, public, it's five hundred and sixty people.
The question, you're going to send it to all the councillors.
I will send it, yes. I'm going to send it to five hundred and sixty, but I will send it to somebody who applies your ask.
If you forward it to town clerk.
There we are.
Councillor Hollage, could I ask you to send it to the town clerk rather than individual councillors?
I would do that.
Then it will be sent out to everyone.
That's the best way.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much for being here and speaking. Okay, to receive reports from ward district councillors. We have four here tonight. Anybody wish to give a ward report? Otherwise I'll move on. To receive ward reports from town councillors. Councillor Crofty.
Thank you, Chair. I had a, there's an email today from a worried person regarding the drainage of Ashton Park Pond. There were concerns that with school holidays looming, that with the, the mud or the slurry that is quite deep, they're worried about school kids or kids falling into it. I did forward the details to both RDC councillors from Ward and my colleague councillor Plim. And apparently the lady from Rother has contacted the lady to express concerns, but there is concern about the deepness of it. And also we think the five gates have come and rescued a swan because it got stuck in the mud recently as well.
For, for those that don't use social media, it was advertised on social media, it was planned and it was for, to repair some work that needed to be done. It wasn't clear how long it was going to be empty, unless anyone around the table knows anymore.
Yeah, no, I just had a discussion yesterday. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's, the ideal situation is that it would, the lake would be refilled by the end of the week. But that's not set in stone, but that's what everybody's aiming for. But this work is crucial because, you know, we have to take care of the silt, we have to take care of the infrastructure and it has to be repaired. So it's very unfortunate, but it has to happen.
Thank you. An advantage of having a double hatter on the town council, we get the real information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other ward? Sorry, councillor Cowall, I just had a comment.
Yes, right. And just, just to go second on, on councillor Crofty's thing there, it would have been nice if something could be put in place for the wildlife down there, because walking through the park today, there was ducklings and just looking to go somewhere, but then just sitting on the grass. But back to my point, this month I attended the VE Day, which was superb, down the seafront, raising the flag, the bagpipes, everything. And also on the Sunday, the, the closure of the road, the live music. I'd like to thank all the people, the staff, the councillors that attended and went. I, I thought it was a great success, but most of all I'd like to thank the people of Exhill because they represented in numbers from young to old. And it was great just watching people mingling and talking in the streets. So well done all, everyone involved behind the scenes and having fun there. Thank you.
Just to add to that, when I was having my blood pressure down at PCN this afternoon, what morning, there was a lady alongside me and she said, "Didn't I see you at the VE Day on Sunday?" She said, "What a wonderful experience that was." So people are noticing what we're doing and it's great to get feedback like that. Any other ward reports? Sorry, councillor Dyson.
Just trigger of thought, and I know you made reference to the beacon, but I should just want to pay tribute to the little commoners and the beacon that they had in the car park of the week, which was unbelievable. But it was very well attended, very well organised, and it was a compliment to the one at Kelly Hill.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thomas, do you have your hand up?
Yes, and Stephen Ford, ladies congratulated us on planting five trees along Kingswood Avenue and then complained about the footpath up to Turkey Road.
One thing leads to another. Perhaps you'd like.
Thank you, Chair. From Sackville Ward, I was delighted to be invited to visit the boxing club, which is in our ward. Absolutely inspirational organisation, the way they, the way they sorted out their clubhouse and the way the, the leader of the boxing club is fully committed to boxing for everybody and health for everybody and youth involvement for everybody, not necessarily focused on national competitions or area competitions. It really is inclusive. And the reason he invited me was they're after a minibus.
Who's just waiting to come?
And then I, I did, I, I said that I would do everything I could. Currently I'm trying to invite our MP to come and visit the boxing club. And I'm investigating other ways, other sources of funding. And I hope to be able to enlist the, the help of some people who are already well, well-versed in the art of filling in funding requests to various places. So that's ongoing. But I couldn't let it pass without saying what a wonderful club that is and the wonderful work it does.
And I would support councillor Burn because coincidentally, I went down the following night. I didn't even know it was there, to be frank, because you wouldn't unless you know. I found it, it's an amazing place. So I too am doing some work to try and understand what I can find to support them. So if you ever get the opportunity of getting involved and supporting them, they're a really forward-going club and we should try and help them. Councillor Crofty.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, also I've been helping them as well because I've known Taryn Ryan-Reyn, so for a while there. She was the one that came to me when they were being moved out of Pemsey, or where it was, where the old building was. And they asked me years ago anywhere, and I suggested the one behind Home War House, which is interesting, so. But yeah, they are a real good group and I'm hoping they will come to the town council asking for some funding.
They can but ask. That's what we're here to support local organisations. So, okay, any other ward reports? Otherwise I'm going to move on. To planning matters, to receive an update on the neighbourhood plan. We have sort of got a little bit of an update in so much as there's now four councillors that are involved in it. And we've got a provisional date for a meeting with the relevant person from Rother district council who leads on neighbourhood plans, which I believe is sometime twentieth of June comes to mind, I think. Councillor Plim's nodding at me because that is about right, isn't it? So we're hoping that that will be, be able to start progressing it, but I just want to temper your enthusiasm. This is quite a long process. This is early stages. Don't expect it to be done by Christmas. Councillor Dyson.
No, but it's a start. I'd like to congratulate you on that start. We need to make a start.
Councillor Crofty.
Thank you, Chair. Who's actually, who are the councillors on the?
Councillor Plim, councillor Winter, councillor Thomas and myself. That was agreed at the last full council meeting, I believe.
Yeah, I was recovering.
So moving on, sorry councillor Simpley.
Yeah, I, I just think it's for clarity, neighbourhood plans normally take about five years if you're lucky. So it's a very, very long process and we, we need to be aware of that.
Yeah, that's why I was tempering everyone's enthusiasm, because it is.
To put a timeframe on it, you know, and five years would be, would be.
So we'll, we'll, we'll meet with Rother and then we hope to be able to go and see a couple of small parishes and we'll just dung them to see what's. So there's Crowhurst and Nifield, we've both done them in the last six months. And then we'll see where we go from there. Councillor Crofty.
Thank you. I saw, was it the last meeting at Rother, there was a, was it Crowhurst that put the town council? Is there someone, there's someone that have a representative for them that can help with neighbourhood planning?
So that's what we're going to do.
No, I mean, there's someone that could talk, that can help.
That's what we're going to do. We're going to meet with Rother first to get the protocol and the procedures. And then we'll go and discuss with two that have gone through that process so you can understand if you like what. Because it isn't for officers of the town council to do this, it's for town councillors with support from residents to make this plan happen. And we have some residents who are interested in getting involved in it, which is really good. But it's up to the people that are running a neighbourhood plan to do all the hard work. So that's why when we put names in there, I did say at that time, only put your name forward if you've got time to do this, because it will take a lot of time. So, so that is an update. As councillor Dyson said, it is progress. And that's all we can ask for is progress. Item twenty-seven, I think we've done that, so I'll move on. We've done item twenty-eight. The time to talk about external representatives, so item twenty-nine. Councillor Jackton and councillor Thomas, do you wish to say anything about Routh?
So at the last meeting, we reported the intention to arrange a special meeting with the other counties and parishes. Can I ask the clerk whether any progress has been made on that and how that's likely to synchronise with the Lawna Ford meeting that we just discussed?
Yeah, so we provisionally started looking at dates and venues, most likely the Coonan Beach. But we're also looking at Delawar as well. And we're looking at mid to late June for that.
Okay, so when I did my report from the last meeting, I outlined a number of things that I thought we could discuss at this proposed special meeting and asked anyone for comments. I can read out what they were. I mean, it's basically to discuss things like a joint position on assets that we used to own and were given to Rother and now are being handed back to us, hopefully for nothing, that kind of thing. Clarity on money, the idea that we should not bid for battle things, battle should not bid for our things. And then I think the more complicated bit is whether our services provided here that are Rother-wide or whether there are services that are unusual and might not merit having an employee, but we need a bit of expertise and how will that expertise be provided? So those are all in my update sent on the twenty-fourth, so I'll wait for the town clerk to advise the date.
Okay.
Sorry about the fact that my laptop's dying.
So there's lots of these and I think it's, it's really important for Routh that Routh support a common approach between all the parishes that are supported within Routh. It's no good Robertsbridge doing something differently to Berwash, doing something differently to Bexhill. There needs to be a standard approach. So it'll be really interesting to see what comes out of that session. Okay? Citizens Advice, anything to say?
Oh, I love, anyone who receives our local MP's newsletter will know that he recently met with the Citizens Advice and just reading between the lines there, because Citizens Advice are very, very busy at the moment. Their main emphasis is still energy advice to those in the rural areas in terms of badly insulated accommodation and, and how to conserve energy, how to make best use of what you've got. So they're, they're carrying on with that programme, so there's no, there's no real update.
Okay. I have nothing to say for Bexhill Air Cadet Squadron. Bexhill Maritime.
No update. No update, I'm afraid.
No update, okay. Little Gate Farm, Town Board, I've even reminded what, I'm not going to read it out. It's pretty straightforward, but we will be recruiting an organisation to create the spatial plan vision of Bexhill. And for clarity, it's around all the under-utilised or not-used areas within Bexhill and how that could be better used, regenerate them, and that's business properties, residential and everything else, which links into lots of other plans because everybody loves a plan. So all that's in my report.
Not least all to a neighbourhood plan.
Which we'll link into that as well.
Which will be five years down the line.
Yeah, so that's the Town Board. King Valley.
We've got our annual big Green Day event on Sunday, June the eighth, through which everybody's invited.
Okay. Start time, do you know or have?
It's ten o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce and Tierney Fund, that's work in progress because people haven't asked for any money yet. So moving on from twenty-nine, goes on to item thirty, motions from councillors. There are none. Item thirty-one, correspondence and matters for information. There are none. Questions from councillors and future agenda items, there's three questions that were asked and the answers are a long time. So thirty-two B, to receive questions from councillors. Any councillors got any questions? Councillor Drayson.
One is, why at the last meeting did we discuss the mayor's cadet in advance of the new mayor? Shouldn't it come at the meeting after the new mayor has been established? That's a question.
Potentially, but would it matter? Because it's, I don't get a choice in who the mayor or cadet is, whether I'm mayor or not mayor.
So you don't get a choice whether there's a cadet or not?
No.
No, okay. And then secondly is, I noticed this evening that I'm over this side. Could I please ask that councillors are sat with their ward colleagues? I couldn't give you an answer to the question before because my ward colleague's over there, so I couldn't discuss it with her. So can we please make sure that we sit in ward pairs?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Crofty.
Thank you. I've just got to say that the young cadet who was doing the flag bearer at the VE Day memorial did an excellent job, although it's his first time. I think he was, he did a real good job and he was there at the beacon as well.
Is that a question?
I know it's not. I just wanted to praise the young chap for being there, so.
Did you realise?
So that's what...
I observed similar, but could have been under the VE Day.
Yeah, so I didn't, until Brian said that, I didn't realise.
Any other questions from councillors? Otherwise, I'm going to move on. Future agenda items. Sorry, councillor Drayson.
Here again. Could we please look at a set process for selecting the chair with a deadline of perhaps the previous meeting, so that we don't have people on the day deciding they fancy giving it a go? And then secondly, also a proper process for the committee places, so that it isn't last minute. I mean, the email asking us to express committee preferences is by ten o'clock the next day. So if you haven't read the message. So it's just, can we get that process so that perhaps it's all, the people who are standing are known about well before the meeting? Thank you.
Okay. You're suggesting sort of do it the way Rother do it, about three months in advance. Because Rother...
Well, that's a bit soon, but yeah.
But Rother's chair mirrors the existing chair for three months prior to them taking over.
Just... At least... Yeah, it's not on the day, but that's the motion to...
It's a, it's a future agenda item. Okay? Any other future agenda items? Moving on to thirty-two D, to consider any new risks to be added to the risk register. Nope. Okay. Item thirty-three, date of next meeting. It says to be agreed on the agenda, but we agreed it earlier. It's on your nice sheet. So that's already been set for us.
Twenty-fifth of June at six thirty.
Twenty-fifth of June at six thirty. Thank you, councillor Drayson. So at this point in time, I'm now going to close this meeting to members of the public. Thank you.